Call the meeting in order, please rise. After you join me in a moment of reflection on the business before us this evening and keep our loved ones in our hearts. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Basso. Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Kromarski.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan. Mayor, City Clerk, Treasurer, and Attorney are all present.
All right, no special presentations tonight. Under the consent calendar, we've got the approval of minutes of a city council meeting from October 6, 2020, along with the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending October 16, 2020. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Move by Alderman Violet, seconded by Alderman Kromarski. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
All right. No sealed bids tonight, under my report. Just like to remind people to wear your masks when you're in the public or private. The numbers are COVID, numbers are getting higher unfortunately, and we need to protect ourselves and others that we come in contact with. So, in the public interest, please, wear a mask when you're out or in close quarters. On the little bit lighter side, Halloween, we are going to have Halloween in Palos Heights. We ask that you be smart and be safe. What we've done is, we have these little posters that were actually put in the regional last week. Everyone who gets regional got one of these. They're also available at City Hall and at the rec center. You can also download them from our website, palosheights.org. The times will be from seven, from three o'clock till seven o'clock. We ask that you, if you're interested in actually participating in the Halloween trick-or-treating, put this in your window, turn your porch light on. If not, do not, do not have your porch light on. That way, if you don't want to partake, you don't have to, and the people who are participating from the trick-or-treating side of it will know what houses they can come up to. We do want to have some fun during this trying times, and this seems to be the way to do it. But, you know, wear your mask when you're trick-or-treating, wash your hands, and keep your distance as you go through the trick-or-treating. Also, what's coming up in voting, right now, we have the voting going on at the rec center. It's every day from 8:30 until 7:00, Monday through Friday. Saturdays and Sundays from 9:00 till 5:00. The numbers have been phenomenal. The first day, we had 716 people vote. In our area, we were probably, we were the number two to the Orland Township. But, and what, from what I understand, I talked to one of my in-laws today, and he he actually got there about 6:15, and he was home by 6:45. He, the line in front was long, but once you got in, you got through the maze, you know, it really was not too, too bad. On another side, too, we will have the pace bus, the municipal bus, that will, it's a suggestion of Alderman McGovern and McGrogan, will be available to take you to the rec center to vote, and also on, to the polling, to various polling places on Election Day, which is two weeks from tonight, or from today. So, if you need a ride, dial, or you can call 708-361-1807, and they'll make arrangements to pick you up at your house and take you to a polling place, whether it be the rec center, or again, on Election Day, to your appropriate polling place. Some of the polling places have been moved. We're trying to get everyone out to vote, as many people as we can, and this seems to be an ideal way to do it. So, that's the end of my remarks tonight. City Clerk, anything?
No report.
City Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the treasurer's report for the period ending September 30. General fund started the month with $4,598,025. Revenues of $745,359. Expenses, $887,239. Other source use, $28,391. Ending cash in the general fund was $4,484,537. Total of all funds began the month with $20,068,726. Revenues were $1,741,51. Expenses totaled $2,49,104. Other source use, $146,320. Leaving an ending balance in all funds of $19,614,352. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Move by Alderman Violet, seconded by Alderman McGovern. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. City Attorney?
No report.
Any communications, anyone have? All right, citizens wishing to address the council, this was done by email, anything you have?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, understanding committees, Alderman McGrogan, Finance.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, hi, I'm calling in from the phone, and all the other Alderments, hello. So, for months, we've been talking about the progressive tax amendment that's on the ballot, that each and every citizen has a right to vote on for this coming, the next two weeks. You know, as the Chair of the Finance Committee, I've been keeping my eye on the impact of what it might do for local and small business owners. Since I've been spending a little time at home, I've been able to watch all the commercials, and I actually just noticed one recently, that a group of over 400,000 small business owners ran a, and are running a commercial against this progressive tax because they feel it will hurt their businesses. And as, you know, since we have many small businesses in town, in fact, most predominantly, almost all, but maybe the food stores are fall in their category, it does have a, an effect on what could happen with the city's sale, share of the sales tax revenue. And if it falls, I mean, if there's more spendable money taken out of the people's pockets, that could have a ripple effect into the stores where people spend less. You know, typically, and I'm sure the treasurer has probably some exact numbers, but on a year, you know, we probably get in between $750 and $1 million. So, all I can say is, to every voter, please think about the sales tax angle when you're voting, and it might have an impact, as well as, since we have so many retirees in town, that it's unclear as to what their intentions are in the progressive tax. I'm trying to get a handle on that, as to are they, or are they not going to tax pension? So, in any event, it's important that we all get out and vote, and vote whichever way you feel, but these are just some of the points that would concern me as Chairman of the City's Finance Committee, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman McGrogan. Public safety, Alderman McGovern?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two comments to turn around and make tonight. First one, naturally, we have Halloween coming up. All right, so, let's be aware of everybody wearing their face mask when you, when you're out. Stay at least six feet from everybody. The hours for the city will be from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. If you're gonna turn around and accept people, put your front porch light on, all right? And remember, please, like I said, please wear your mask, wash your hands, keep your social distance, enjoy your evening, and just, just have fun. The other thing I want to talk about tonight is the fraudulent unemployment debit cards that people are receiving, okay? I'm gonna read this thing from Deputy Chief Chikowski, so everybody understands, and I don't make a mistake. All right. Over the past couple of weeks, complaints have been received by the Palos Heights Police Department concerning citizens receiving fraudulent unemployment debit cards that were not requested. It appears the Illinois Department of Emergency Security, Employment Security, computer system has been compromised. And so, if you receive an unsolicited debit card, do not use the debit card if you are not authorized to receive unemployment benefits. Authorized use will require reimbursement of, unauthorized use of the card will require reimbursement, okay? Contact your local police department immediately if you, to report this kind of fraud. You can contact the IDES, 800-244-5631, to report any, report the unsolicited debit card. Card recipients should be cautious if they are solicited from anyone concerning the cards. Card recipients may want to place the credit freeze on their, or fraud, credit freeze or fraud alert to prevent any additional identity theft from happening, okay? And once it's reported, the breach will be reported directly to, to, to the other, other, to the three, three credit bureaus, I'm sorry. Experian, Equifax, and TransUnion, okay? Victims of these frauds will face potential harm. If you believe, if you believe you've been a victim of one of these kinds of scams, please immediately contact the police, Palos Heights Police Department. This has become a very popular scam, and it's unfortunate, because if you do get the credit, the debit card, and you use it, you're gonna pay, you're gonna have to pay it back. It's just, and it's gonna be, you'll end up in an ugly mess, there's no doubt about it. So, for right now, and for right now, that's, that's all I really have to say.
All right, thanks, Alderman McGovern.
Sorry for my voice.
No problem. Municipal grounds of property, Alderman Basso?
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda, but I would just like to remind all the citizens that next week will be the last week that the chipper makes its rounds, and the yard waste will be picked up all through November. At the end of my report, I would like to wish all council members good health and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Alderman Clifford?
No report at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Alderman Key, recreation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve a payment to Upland Design in the amount of $8,375.90 for professional services completed on the Palmer Park project.
Move by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion, roll call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve payment number two to Integral Construction in the amount of $177,812.20 for work completed on Palmer Park, pending receipt of waivers.
Move by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman Violet. Any discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve and hire, approve the hire of JSD Professional Services Incorporated in the amount of $15,000 to provide the landscape architecture development of the Misty Meadows Park Master Plan.
Move by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
I have a suggestion. I would like maybe Alderman Key of the committee to take a look at one provision in the contract which addressed site visits. There doesn't seem to be a limit, and each visit is $500. And I thought that maybe, in the, you know, assuming that it's approved, we could put a limit on that, or that could be maybe even stricken or addressed in some way, and I, you know, I would leave that up to the committee members, but it's a little open-ended, I thought maybe we should button that up a little bit.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Jay.
On that contract, if you read in there, it's, well, Mr. McGrogan is saying it's correct about the visits and the fee for coming on site, but if you read in there at the beginning, it says, upon the request of the client, X amount of dollars, which in this case, I believe it's $500, will be charged for that request. So, in other words, if I'm reading that right, you, us, the client, would have to request them to come out for some reason, and for that reason, they would charge you the $500. It's not an arbitrary.
I've written it down, so I'll, I'll talk to Matt about it at the rec department and make sure that we have an understanding of that.
Get a handle on it, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Roll call, then.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
And then, besides our regular Halloween hours, the rec department is going to have an event in the pool parking lot from 10:00 till noon in the morning on Halloween, and it's a drive-through event. So, if you don't want to walk around with your kids and have them go up to all the doors, you can come over by the pool and drive through, and that's a nice little safe way of, of getting your kids some treats and things. So, you might want to check out the Parks and Rec website about that.
Only for kids? I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'm sure if you drive through.
Okay.
Mayor's, mayor's are allowed.
All right, okay. Just checking.
Jeff, is there any information on there? I know there's a limited or a constrained Veterans Day ceremony. Do you have any?
The thing I know about it is that normally it's, normally it's in, at breakfast, but this time it's at lunch, and you do have to call to make a reservation. And do you have anything else that?
I, I have the, the copy of it here. It's from, from the rec department, they will be hosting a Veterans Day lunch, what used to be a breakfast in the past. It'll be on November 9, from 11:00 to 12:30. This year, due to the COVID, we wanted to provide this event to our veterans while still being mindful of the need is of social distance and limit contact as much as we can. We'll be doing a boxed lunch, having Rick pick him, come back and sing his songs, and please let us know if you can make it. We'd love to have you there. Have a wonderful and great weekend, and, which means, you'll have to call the park, the rec department and turn around and get a reservation.
And there's a limit to how many people we can have in the room, so that's why we're encouraging.
I believe the limit is 50.
Yeah.
Right.
So, the gentleman that's gonna be doing the singing is the same gentleman that was there last year.
Okay, great.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Roads to construction, Alderman Kromarski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve a payment to Lindahl Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $165,098.25 for the 2020 roadway resurging program.
Second.
Move by Alderman Kromarski, seconded by Alderman Clifford. Any discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Okay, pass.
Motion carries.
Move to proceed with the $50,000 settlement for the 2012 Southwest Highway Sidewalk Project. I D Act contract 63732. Final documents to be prepared by I D Act legal counsel, reviewed by the city attorney, and approved by the city council. And if the Aldermin have any questions as to this project, please refer to pages 16 through 32, and it will clearly depict the embankment failure.
Okay, move Kromarski, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion, roll call?
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
I D concludes my report.
Thank you, thank you very much. License permits and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have two items on the agenda this evening. First, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city council to draft an ordinance updating the city code, section 96.01(c), specific nuisances enumerated.
I think you want to amend that to the city attorney.
It says city attorney.
Did I, what did I say?
You said city council.
What in general are they updating? There's, is there any one specific item?
Yes, so, we're striking the word boisterous from noise, so that, so it's an adjective that we're striking, so boisterous nature, so noise of a boisterous nature, now it's just gonna be noise.
Okay.
Okay. Did they put a time, a timeframe on that, like evening, as far as, as far as music or things of that nature going on?
Yes, what, in, in the code, you mean?
Are they updating the code to reflect any changes in that?
No.
Not at this time, this is just.
It's just striking the word boisterous.
All right.
So, the, if, if you like, so the, the code reads, no person owning or in possession, charge, or control of any building or premises shall use the same or permit the use of the same, or rent the same to be used for any business or employment, or for any purpose of pleasure or recreation, if the use shall, from its noise or boisterous nature, disturb or destroy the piece of the neighborhood in which the building or premises are situated, or be dangerous or detrimental to the health, and such use is declared a nuisance.
All right, that covers everything, then.
So, is that boisterous nature? That's not just boisterous, but? Correct, boisterous nature. Okay.
All right. Is motion on the floors or second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Clifford. Roll call? I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, let me just catch up here. The second item I have is a motion to approve the purchase of a new wide-format printer from Gordon Flesch in the amount of $8,725 for the building department.
Move by Alderman Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Clifford. Discussion, roll call?
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Water and sewer, Alderman Violet?
I have no report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Under special committees, Alderman Key, Business and Economic Development?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just received this report from Ken Bussi, our community development person, yesterday when we had a meeting, and despite COVID-19, Palos Heights has retained and is attracting new businesses to town, and I'd just like to point out some of the businesses, I get asked about a couple of these, I'm sure if you drive down Harlem Avenue, you've seen some signs call up, but there's a, a business, La Bella Uniforms, at 11845 Southwest Highway, that, they reach out a lot to the, like, nursing community, uniform kind of needs there. Central Discount Cleaners and Marmo Teaurang, 12216 South Harlem. Capri Restaurant now has a pizza carryout, that's new to their establishment.
It's very good, by the way, I was there.
Okay, very good, good to hear that. Sassy Girl Chalet Marketplace, 7224 West College. Excellent Taekwondo Center, 6105 West 127th Street. Precision Dance Project, 6350 West 135th Street, so it's next to the 711 and 135th and Ridgeland. Franklin Pie Company, 12306 South Harlem, that's gonna be open just before the holidays, so I, I actually had dinner at Franklin House tonight, and they said that hopefully they'll be open for Thanksgiving as well as Christmas, so that's exciting to hear. Manhattan Firehouse Grill at 12658 South Harlem. Amy Lynn Handmade, 12343 South Harlem, which are homemade items. Andy's Frozen Ice Cream, you've seen the building going up, that's at 12755 South Harlem, they're looking at December, January for the opening there. Fat Papa's, 11845 Southwest Highway, all new, uniquely branded restaurant will open in the Palos Crossing Shopping Center. Hauser Chiropractic Care, 7230 West 127th Street. Quality Plus Photo, which has been around for a number of years now, is expanding into the, so they're, they're actually moving one space from where they are now, but they're merging with another company, and this space actually has 45% more space, and so, they're staying, just moving one store over. Mexiko Restaurant, 7231, mid-January opening, it's a Mexican restaurant going in right next to Giuliani's. Dunkin' Donuts at 11851 Southwest Highway. Harmony Restaurant, 13248 South 76th Avenue, coming soon into 2021. And then, just, I mean, we've all been excited this whole year with Palos senior residents having opened this year, and they, people started moving in in February. There are 99 independent living units, 55 assisted living, and 24 memory care, and I don't think they're full up, so, you know, if you, if you have a need for a place, please call there.
Oh, good.
And, yeah, so there's a lot of activity in town, it seems like during COVID, you know, I, I still encourage people to, you know, shop local and eat local as much as you can. Businesses are still hurting, it's a scary proposition when, you know, today it was announced that some of the surrounding counties will be going, going backwards because the, the number of COVID cases has gone over that 8% mark, and so, they're going back to not being able to eat inside restaurants or bars, so, we're fortunate that's not happening here, but it's a scary proposition for all small businesses, so keep that in mind, especially coming up on the holiday season, to try to, to shop local. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
On that Andy's Ice Cream? That's gonna be a nice, it's gonna be very crowded here. I took a spinover, me and my wife, Tolklam, just to try it out, because there's one there in 95th and 1st, and it's very, very good, so I could see that gonna be very, very successful there.
Good. Just, I think something to be mentioned, worth noting, actually, is that of the businesses you, you mentioned, and I have read the same list the other day, three of those businesses are existing businesses that have done very well here in Palos Heights.
Yes.
You know, you've got Capri, you know, and Franklin's, and, and also Quality Printing, they had enough confidence in Palos Heights to actually expand their businesses into either a new venture or an expanding venture. I mean, that says a lot for what kind of response people, when they do come into a town, open up, and the response that the residents actually give them. So, I think that, that needs to be said, that, you know, we've had some expansion in town also, so it's, it's a credit to our residents and how they, how they patronize our local businesses.
Absolutely, and, you know, really, the creativity and willingness to keep their doors open, a lot of the restaurants had, you know, tents available for people to eat outside, and that comes at a cost, you know, those, those tents are quite expensive, and so, but they're making the investment to do that, to keep open and provide services for our residents, so it's much appreciated.
Another thing, most, most of those businesses, as you mentioned, and our existing businesses are locally owned, you know, and so, they have more flexibility to deal with this crisis as opposed to a, a national chain where corporately says, okay, if you don't do this kind of dollar amount of, of gross business, we're gonna shut you down. I mean, that, that's the reality, what happens in the business world, where these people, you know, they may have to cut their hours a little bit, but they can make some adjustments and adapt to the COVID crisis, and they've done, many of them have done very well, we look at the real, the sales tax numbers, so, so thank you very much. Cable TV, Alderman McGovern?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to introduce Dave Wurzak and Tracy Schumid. We have two new volunteers for Channel 4.
Very good.
So, that's very promising, because Channel 4 was, was very soon, is gonna start live broadcasts. We'll be going, it'll be going live, which has never been happening before. It was something that Ron Plann down, he talked with me about it about a year ago, and he finally has figured it out. He, he's an amazing man. Him and, him and Carl, somehow they put all these things together and run these things day in and day out. And you can't see the difference in their quality between them and a national corporation on their front, filming. My compliments to all of them, and I know you're listening back there, and it's not just because you're back there listening, it's all working. I, I really mean this.
Because they weren't nice to you, they flittered your face in front of you.
They'll make me smile. They'll add a little makeup on the screen or something, I don't know, we'll figure it out. But they put in a lot of extra hours out here that people don't have any idea about. You just don't take a camera out there, turn around and put it on and come back in and put it on a screen and do the quality of work that they can do. So I just want to give them a little compliment and welcome our two new volunteers. And they'll start their, they're starting their training. I think one's already put on a show.
Very good.
I think one's already started to put on a show for us, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Any old business tonight? Citizens, address the council, there's no one here, any new business? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Stay safe.